You're watching Cable 2.
September 9th, 2025, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. And I do apologize that we started this meeting a little bit late. We had some additional things that we needed to discuss enclosed. Please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Maya Angelou. "I did then what I knew how to do. Now that I know better, I do better." We will now have a moment of silence in remembrance of an Atkins High School student. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that motion passes unanimously. We will move on to our public comment section. The super-- oh, excuse me, I apologize. Next is the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Board Chair. For our superintendent's update today, I wanted to provide some opportunity to celebrate some of our schools that had exceptional results in the release of the school accountability results this past week. So we're going to highlight three of our schools, one elementary, one middle, and one high school today. So we're going to start with Forest Park Elementary. Principal there is Dr. Deborah Gladstone, and we would like to invite her to the podium to share her information.
Superintendent Moore, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, School Board Members, thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to share and talk about some of the things that we think led us to our success this school year. So first of all, I think that we have worked hard at Forest Park Elementary to create a collaborative culture. Everyone that shows up there every day is connected and committed to doing what is best for the students in our building, their academic, social, emotional growth. And that has led us into the next slide that I would like to talk about, which is our collaborative planning. So this, I think, has led us to success. Each week, our grade levels have a 90-minute collaborative planning session, and it's facilitated by a multi-classroom teacher or an instructional facilitator. They come together as a grade level and make their lesson plans together, sharing out best practices, discussing the resources, approaches, and methods that we think will give us that high-student achievement that we need at Forest Park for our scholars. Also, this helps build professional capacity, and it also helps to support our teachers so they're not in this lesson planning work alone. That leads me to also a separate event that we have each week, which is a 90-minute collaborative, I'm sorry, professional learning team meeting that's separate from our collaborative planning. They have 90 minutes for planning and then 90 minutes for PLT. At this professional learning team meeting, they look at standards. They analyze the standards, they determine what the standard is asking them to do. They also create the action steps for achieving the goals in that standard. They create common forms of assessments, and they decide when assessments will be given. I think the most crucial thing that we have done at Forest Park has been in our PLT meetings where we look at our data and we make steps based on data, and we do that with a sense of urgency. We do not wait till the end of the quarter, but we do it immediately. We then, from there, take that data, we determine what action step will be implemented, who will do it, how are we going to measure it, and when are we coming back together to see if we are being successful with that. The next thing would be the use of our instructional assistants. We could not do this work without them. They provide support with early literacy acquisition skills for all of our students K-3, so that all of our K-3 teachers only have to focus on one small flexible reading group at a time, which means that all those students are heard, they're able to read to an adult each and every day. We also have TAs in the upper grades that support small flexible math groups for third, fourth, and fifth, and for fourth and fifth grade, which means again, every student is able to read to an adult each day, so that adult can then determine next action steps. What are the strategies that they have mastered? And what strategies do we need to work on to help them to become proficient readers? And last would be expectations. Forest Park has worked hard to raise the expectations of what we believe our students can do. And this has been evident in the rigorous lesson planning and also the heightened student engagement that we've seen in our lessons. Also, we revamped our PBIS for Forest Park, and that has been definitely a game changer for us. We have a decrease in our office referrals, and this revamping has helped our students have clarity around the expectations for behavior at Forest Park. And so we think this has been great because now we have increased instructional time for all of our scholars. Also, the raising of expectations is not just for the students, but for our staff. They are committed to growing as professionals and building their professional capacity. They have embraced our coaching model, which is that we differentiate for our teachers. Everybody does not get the same coaching. They get coaching based on what they think they need to support their students and what they needed to do and to grow to be professional educators that continue to do this work. And at this time, if my Forest Park family could please stand up because you all did the work.
Thank you, Dr. Gladstone, and congratulations on your success. Next up, we have Walker Town Middle, Monica Comer, who will talk to us a little bit about their success.
Hi, good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Moore, thank you for having me and guests. So I'm really, really excited to talk about Walker Town Middle School, but it's really hard to follow greatness, Dr. Gladstone. Somebody was quoted saying, "Whatever she touches turns into gold." And it is true. I was very, very fortunate to be her Assistant Principal at Middle Springs Middle School. And one thing she taught me was, you got to treat middle school like it's elementary. I mean, if you know Gladstone, you can't keep up with her, but she's like, "Middle schoolers need expectations, they need high expectations, and we need to be student-centered." So a lot of what she said is truly what I've mimicked, so I'm not going to reiterate, I'm going to reiterate what she's taught me, but it's really the same framework, so I'm really excited to present this. So when it comes to our systems of success, just as we've talked before, we have to have clear expectations. And a lot of what our middle schools don't hear sometimes is positive praise. And that's what PBIS is. And it's truly just clear expectations that we have around the building, so it's never really intentional, it's intentional in a sense, but it's never targeted. It's, everybody has these clear expectations, and these expectations, as Dr. Gladstone said, is for everybody. They're for adults, to make sure that we're looking at the positive and that kids hear the positive. Also, we have consistent active monitoring, which means that what we expect is what we're going to inspect, so we want to make sure we're always actively monitoring what our students are doing. And if not, if we see that there's some mistakes, we deal with it right there. We've also strengthened our observations and feedback systems because it's kind of hard when your teachers are getting different feedback from different adults, so we want to make sure that our feedback and our observations are all speaking the same message for what's best for kids. And that came from relay coaching, and I was very grateful for that. We also, again, a model that we copied from elementary is small intervention groups. And that's really hard sometimes to grasp in middle school because we think small groups are just for elementary, and they're not. They're for everybody, so we made sure these small intervention groups were embedded into our schedule last year, and that's really a huge catalyst of our achievement. Real-time analysis and response to students in PLTs. In PLTs, again, it goes to collaborative leadership. It wasn't me telling you what to do. It's, you're the expert, let me just follow through with what you need support in. So that was very, very helpful. And also, we were able to start opportunity culture, which means that the teachers in that building became coaches, so they know our students, and that's the best way to coach is when you know that population. So those are the strategies for our success. Also, with all this going on, we still celebrated our growth, and it was 2.57, and that's huge because last year, we didn't meet growth. So we went from way over here to way over here. So I am very, very excited for that. And that's for every group, and that just is an amazing feeling. And our staff deserves this huge shout-out. So we were able to exceed growth, and we're very happy about it. And everything was blue for Blue Data, so, let's see here. All right, and just to wrap it up, we are the pack. You always hear my messages, "Go pack," but we really take pride, achievement, and co-operation and kindness as our values. This is embedded in everything we do. It's not just posters on the wall. The kids carry that pack, that pride, that achievement, that academic integrity, the cooperation. You'll see kids pick up trash, you'll see kids mimic what we do, and kindness is what that sense of belonging is for them. So we definitely value our values. All right, and if I could work a PowerPoint? And again, we are the pack, and the strength of a wolf is the pack. I have not heard, yeah, and the strength of the pack is the wolf. And what it states is, without each other's strength, we're not unified. So that's what we really rely on. So thank you for your time, and I am very, very, very appreciative of our staff at Walker Town Middle School, every single one of them. So thank you again.
Thank you, Principal Comer, and congratulations as well on your success. And up now, we have from Kennedy High School, Dr. Alfreda Smith.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Moore and Board, and thanks for the invite. There's not a whole lot more that I have to add to what my colleagues have said. My teaching career began at Walker Town Middle School, and Dr. Gladstone is my doughnut buddy, she knows what I'm talking about. But it's great to be before you. Principals don't do this work alone. If they tell you that, like I've said, it's not the truth. So I have some great people here tonight. If there's staff from JFK here, please stand. Thanks. Thanks for being here. And if there's, if there's students here, please stand. This is my why. Keon and Savion and all the others. And Aubreyana is somewhere. But it's great to lead at JFK. So what has led to our success? Number one, positive relationships. It's important to have genuine relationships amongst staff and also students. Keeping the main thing the main thing, making sure that you're working on the right work. Sometimes we can work hard, but we're not working on working towards our goals and what it is that we want to fulfill. Understanding where you are as a school, and more importantly, where you're headed and where you want to go. Data drives everything at JFK, just like it does at Forest Park and Walker Town Middle. You've got to know it, you've got to know what it means. Effective communication and collaboration is key. Sometimes we can communicate, but do we really get our message across? Working together as a unit, as a family, is so important. Can't leave out accountability. I'm held accountable for doing what I do, and so are staff at JFK, and so are students. And also, supporting staff and student individual growth, that's important as well. And staff empowerment. So empowerment is having the ability to get people to do things maybe that they wouldn't normally do. That's, seems to be a natural thing at JFK. We gel, and people are okay with taking positive risks. I spoke about data, not just knowing a number, but knowing what's behind the number. A lot of people can rattle off numbers, but what makes up that number? And more importantly, knowing who. So we've done a lot of work in PLTs for student growth, for teacher growth, and making sure that everybody knows the charge and they know our goals across the board. Charting student movement, making sure that we're keeping track, and not just we as staff, making sure students are keeping track of where they are and also setting goals as well. Using, effectively using Mr. Kraft, the SPG calculator. That's a powerful tool, for those of you who are exploring. We kind of live by that at JFK. It lets us know how many students we have to move to proficiency and/or growth, and I am a witness, the staff is a witness, it works. So thank the district for that. Monitor, 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 adjust, adjust, adjust. So she used the word inspect. If you don't go check out what you put in place, there's a possibility that your results will not be what you want it to be. And making sure that you adjust things along the way. And lastly, but definitely not least, allowing students to be students. Allowing high school students to be kids. Yes, Keon and Savion, they like Spirit Weeks, they like Spring Fling, they like having clubs on Friday and learning about SEO topics. So those are some things that have allowed us, as we look at a three-year trend, from a D to not met, from a D to met, from a D to a C to exceed. And I am proud of my staff. Proud of the staff for doing that work. I can't stress enough, my staff, they get on me when I say this. I do not do the work alone. I am fortunate to have great people around me who do not mind rolling up their sleeves and getting the work done, and I definitely appreciate it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I want to just take a moment to thank all three of the principals who came and spoke with us today. I think their passion and their expertise is on display for us. They all talked about things like expectations, accountability, relationships, culture, community, collaboration, things that we want our kids to also see, and they're seeing it in their leaders, and that is when you see these kinds of results. So congratulations. Yes.
I have to say a word because I've worked with all three principals, and they are talking the walk, and they're walking the talk every day. And I've seen it, I've worked with them, and I know it's all from the heart, and I commend you for staying with us, and I hope that you continue to stay with us. But they are sincere and real in doing the work, and I must uplift that as a former principal, that I know what they're doing daily. So thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my update.
Thank you. We will move on to our public comment section. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. The protocols that we have in place for public comments are to ensure orderly and efficient board meetings pursuant to the District Civility Policy 1170. The Board does not tolerate disorderly conduct or disorderly or disrespectful behavior. Please direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. We cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know that you can email us directly. So when you come to the podium to speak, please state your name and the agenda item that you would like to speak on. Our first speaker tonight is Stephanie Wallace.
Good evening, Board. My name is Stephanie Wallace. I'm a 26-year veteran at East Forsyth High School and your 2020 District Teacher of the Year. So last time I did this without notes, but I'm starting tonight in a little bit of church, and I can't misquote my pastor because that'll get me in trouble on Sunday. He did a sermon in 2022 about what's your why. And the two things that stuck with me about that is Psalm 11, "Deep roots determine how you withstand tests." And 1 Corinthians 7:56 to 58, "Stand firm and let nothing move you." I have deep roots, and I'm standing firm, and I'm not going to stop, and I'm not going to be moved. What you are doing is wrong. Thirty days, I have gone to work and held a student or a staff member who has cried. What am I supposed to say to my fourth block inclusion kids when my inclusion teachers had to be out of the room the other day, and he's sitting there going, "Someone's supposed to help me, someone's supposed to help me," when my inclusion teacher, as of Friday, is no longer there? What do we do with all the IEPs that Ms. Valdez is scheduled to be in, not as the principal of record, as the translator? Because she's not going to be there after Friday. Shame on you. We are not stupid. I'm not stupid. Cuts have to be made, we understand that. But you've demonstrated zero effort to find creative ways to prevent this rift from happening this fast and these people having no notice. There are people going to the unemployment line that are the only health insurance for their kids, and you're not doing anything. I was at a meeting last night with a bunch of retired teachers, and they said, "You know, why haven't they thought about calling some of the athletes and the artists and the authors that have graduated from our schools and asking them to put together a fundraiser?" I think in my first remarks, I told you, "Innovation quarter, get innovative." You haven't done it. You haven't done it. And the tears and the apologies, they're falling on deaf ears. It's too little, too late when we are watching our colleagues and our babies cry every single day. We had parents coming to the school today to see Ms. Valdez because they are so heartbroken that we are losing her. There has to be a better way, more innovative way than what you are doing. You are ripping our schools apart every single day. It is the most god-awful thing I have seen in my 26 years in this district. The morale is lower than it was after COVID. I've never seen anything like it. Maybe you want to do what you could do in college, you know how you could audit a class? Maybe instead of firing Mr. Jackson, our EPF teacher, you should come audit his class and learn a little bit about finance.
Thank you. Robert Watkins.
That's going to be difficult to follow. But good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, interim superintendent, School Board Members. Apparently, there's going to be a theme tonight. Ephesians 4:25-27 says this. "Therefore, putting away lying, let each of you speak truth with his neighbor; for we are members of one another. Be angry, and do not sin; do not let the sun go down on your wrath, nor give place to the devil." Ladies and gentlemen, I'm angry. We're all angry, but we will not sin. The sin is seeing teachers leaving on Friday. The sin is because the children are getting left behind. That's what you're doing. And unfortunately, we're more interested in our next reelection or our promotion to a chairman of an association. And we want to pass blame and say, "It's not our fault, we trusted somebody else." That's something a fifth grader would say when they got in trouble in school. "It's not my fault, the dog ate my homework." And I've used that when it didn't work. It's time for you to look in the mirror and step up, be responsible, if nothing else. How about you forego your salaries? I think that may be something you need to look at. And we have an example of one of the best doctors, one of the best teachers as a principal. Instead of looking outside for an organization to find your superintendent, maybe it's about time you look within, at the leaders that just spoke just a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Emily Harrison, and I am a parent of two children in the EC department of this school district. I'm here to talk about the budget tonight, of what you guys have done. Tonight, again, you'll be talking about the budget deficit due to budget mismanagement by this Board, and Ms. Moore, again, will talk about why we had to do the rifts. We understand that cuts had to be made, you know, there's not enough money. However, the unprofessionalism and the sloppiness of how this district has handled the rift process is totally unacceptable. Who would want to come and work here after watching what is unfolding right now? What qualified superintendent will want this job? Is this why you're paying so much money to find someone? We are losing qualified teachers left and right, and you honestly think they're going to come back and work here in the future? I follow what this gentleman just said before me. Why aren't you looking in-house for a superintendent that already knows a lot of this stuff? Some of these rifts were to teachers who help our most vulnerable children succeed, and this is just another broken record you keep hearing of us, and it doesn't matter to you. On August 19th, you said all affected rift staff would be notified between the 25th and the 29th. APs were notified the weekend before that, and then whoops, found out they were wrongly rifted. Then you made an excuse at the 26th meeting, saying the rifts had to go out early to schedule exit meetings, and that the rest of the rift's announcements will be made by August 29th. But then the 10-day data was released, so you paused again. Shocking. EC teachers had to stress and wait over a three-day holiday weekend to see if they still had a job or not. How would you feel if that was you? I asked on August 19th, "Why were you making rift decisions on day five when you still didn't have the data yet?" September 12th is approaching, and teachers and TAs are finding out today that they either don't have a job or they're moving to another school, and if they're moving, they won't find out until Friday where. MAP programs are being discontinued to the needy students. Really? To me, this is completely heartless and bullying. The district is showing their true colors. You are messing with teachers' livelihoods, mental health, and their students, and we just get excuses. And again, this district is showing us that you don't care about the teachers and the students, but you'll probably just give another excuse of why that's not true later on tonight. Do you understand how hard changes for an EC student? Do you know how long it takes an EC student to become comfortable with a new teacher and routines? No, you don't. You just want to mainstream these students, and they can't do that. This is the time that should have been used to help these children understand the change that will be coming, but this district is dragging their feet until the 12th. And so it's impossible, it's an impossible task to complete for the staff. So do you really care about teachers and students and staff and parents, as you say you do? Because right now, from our seats, you don't. The answer is no. So you better step up or step down.
Thank you. Jackson Noden.
Good evening. Right now, I am speaking to you as a teacher at East Forsyth High School. But Friday at 4:00 PM, I will leave my classroom, my colleagues, and over 90 students for the last time, and I will no longer be an employee of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. This is because you chose to cut me, an alternatively licensed teacher. And listen, I get the logic. Why get rid of 50 APs with full licenses and years of experience when there are people like me in the classroom who are not yet licensed? The logic is there, I will admit that. The issue is that this, I would argue, is the most short-sighted solution this Board has presented yet. I chose to be in the classroom. No one forced me, no one coerced me. I made a cautious decision to enter the education, to better my community, and improve the lives of my students. APs chose to leave the classroom, whether that be for economic reasons or career reasons. APs voluntarily left the classroom to pine for a higher calling. Let me spell that out for you. They do not want to be in the classroom, and I do. If East Forsyth is lucky, the AP that took my job won't be able to find anything till December. And if they do, and God knows they're looking, because who wants to work in Forsyth County, they will take that job, and my 90 students will be waiting for the third teacher in one semester. Look, I know there's nothing I can say up here to keep my job, but I feel that alternatively licensed teachers have not had their voice heard. I need the people of Forsyth County to know that the next generations of teachers just take a massive blow. And in a time where people who are excited to be in the classroom are hard to come by, this board made a conscious decision to rip some of us out and throw us into the worst job market in recent memory. And finally, Mr. Watts, you may not remember me, but you gave me some inspiring words last spring. You spoke at a beginning teacher meeting, and where you told me that I was doing an amazing thing and that we need to leave with empathy and that I am inspiring the next generation. I heard, though, that it was your idea to put beginning teachers like me on the chopping block, hours before that fateful board meeting. You are the worst kind of hypocrite, one with power. I know, no, anything you say means nothing.
Point of order. He's out of order.
Alexander Nolan. Order, please. Order, please. Alexander Nolan.
Good evening. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. My name is Alexander Nolan, and I am standing here tonight representing East Forsyth High School as a second-year alternatively licensed teacher. I come to you not only as an educator, but a voice for countless colleagues who feel silenced, dismissed, and disregarded by the very leadership entrusted to serve us. Your representation of our county as a whole has been nothing but embarrassing. You cannot come up with a humane way to solve major mistakes you all have made, and you've placed the weight of these mistakes on the back of us teachers. You made us wait 13 excruciatingly long days to find out whether or not we'd be rifted and sent the emails on Labor Day of all days, the day where we celebrate us laborers. The emotional turmoil that you have put on every teacher and every staff member was unethical and immoral. You are tearing people away from their passions that they chose to be in. And I'm tired of all these tears that I... And to you, Mr. Watts, who stood before all of us, beginner teachers last spring, speaking about how important this profession is, and you vote to cut those alternatively licensed teachers you spoke to, how are you going to stand onstage, praise us as the future of education?
Yes, point of order, please. Please be respectful. Alan Daniel.
If y'all will indulge me for a minute, I'd like to give a shout-out to Dr. Gladstone. I've been following Dr. Gladstone since I taught, tutored in the College Lift Initiative at Mineral Springs. Mineral Springs was on the climb. She got moved to Old Town Elementary, and all of a sudden, Old Town Elementary started to climb. Then she got moved to Forest Park, and Forest Park started to climb. You want to know how it's done? You don't need to hire some $3 million expert from outside. Ask Dr. Gladstone. She's done it. Okay? Sadly, you don't have a pipeline because every school she left tanked. So now I have some questions. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools finished 2425 with $9,371,000 remaining in the Classroom Teacher Fund. $9,371,000. These are from your numbers, not mine. Overall, even including the $13 million overspend in non-instructional support, the district finished with a balance of $2,299,000 in state funds. Could that not have been re-massaged against the $3 million debt? In local funds, supplemental for teacher CO, I'm not sure what that means, but the budget was $950, but we spent $1.6 million. How did we overspend ESER emergency local funds by $7,384,000 on a $3 million budget? How did we overspend mathematics with a $4,100 budget? We overspent it by $535,000. How did we overspend technology by $2.6 million on a $4.8 million budget? Currently, according to the 2425 books, and I know they're still moving, there's $457,000 in ESER funds. Could not that money have been used to pay some teachers until October? I think the end of that time is September. What are the plans for the $457,000 that need to be spent between now and the end of September? I'll have more questions at the end. Thank you very much. And to dare, to dare shut up the teachers you've already crucified, that's low.
Mr. Daniel.
You got a lot of gall.
Dez Balsamo.
Close-ish. My name is Dez Balsamo. I have taught science at Haynes Magnet for 10 years. I'm a proud 2006 graduate of Glenn High School. My son has an IEP and also attends school in this district after college. I chose to come back and teach in this district to help make a positive difference in my community for other first-generation college students like myself. This is my 16th year in the classroom. Yesterday, I sent each board member an email, and I'm here to read it to you because none of you bothered to open it. There's a check-read function on Outlook, by the way. I was just informed yesterday evening that my ECTA, Mia Crowe, will no longer work for the school district. I want to inform you that you're making an irreparable mistake that will most damage educational outcomes for the neediest of my students. I love each and every one of my students. They are able to be successful in my sixth-period class because the team formed between myself and Mia Crowe. Currently, I spend over 50% of my planning time working on 25% of my student caseload. Mia Crowe is my co-teacher. She is so much more than just an assistant. Every day, she pulls a small group for scaffolding after whole-group instruction. Every day, she has a clear plan, and every day, she knows what will happen before class and how to best support our students. She's a phenomenal educator. Every profession, every workplace, no matter where you go, you have three or four people that you can afford to lose. Mia Crowe is not one of those people. So I'm not one to bring a problem to you without offering a solution. The stipend you receive as a board member is the same as the entire salary for my ECTA. Mia Crowe's job could be saved if only one of you gave up your stipend, or if all of you gave up some of it. Everyone on this side of the podium agrees each of you played a role in creating this problem. Now's the time for you to put your money where your mouth is and be part of the solution. We deserve more than a blame game.
Roy Zeta Hopeley.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I always have a demonstration. And so my demonstration today is that as an EC teacher, I'm thankful, I'm sorry, did I speak to everybody? Please forgive me. But as an EC teacher, I'm thankful for the opportunities that I've had to work with students in my classroom and outside. But I also am thankful that I have the support of parents, grandparents, that have all helped make this be a more successful journey for them. And now we have one that has graduated high school, and she's also a college graduate. So I just wanted to say that there's a lot that we're doing, and to me, you need the people in place, and it takes the numbers. So I know we're going through some stuff, and I know a young lady mentioned about writing letters. And I've been wanting to have a public opportunity, hoping that somebody will hear me. But I've written Beyonce. I've written the Kardashians. I've written Mark Zuckerberg. I've written Tyra Banks, and so many more, and I'm just waiting for them to respond so that we can get the money we need to keep the people in place, because education looks different now than it did when I first started. And it takes more people, more eyes, to help make sure our children are going in the right direction and all that. So I just wanted to say that I am doing my part to try to help out. Please don't give up on me because I'm going to try to get money to help, because we do need all of our EC teachers. We do need all of our TAs. We need our assistant principals and principals, and we need our testing coordinators, because everything they do is important. And I love the way at Kennedy with Dr. Smith, that we all work as a family. Like, there are people who come in my classroom that don't teach in my class, but they'll come and share a bright spot. They'll come and help out. So I know this is rough right now, but I wanted to say I believe we're going to get there. We just got to keep holding on and keep fighting. So I'm going to keep writing those letters, because I just got an email today with about three pages of grants I had no idea about, and I'm going to take the time to write them. Now, Dr. Smith has told me I have to leave school by 6:00, so I'm going to leave at 6:00. Normally, I stay to 7:00. But I am committed to doing my part, okay? Thank you, guys.
Missy Monahan.
Good evening. A fish does not know it's wet because it lives in water. You cannot solve today's financial problems with the same mindset that you put us in here for. It's as evidenced as the Raleigh meeting from last week, when we found out that we're on a cargo ship with a rooms-to-go payback plan a year from now. But when asked, "How are you going to pay back the loan?", we said, "You have no plan." Well, we're not on a cargo ship. We've been on the Titanic, and most of us are floating in the water on wooden barges, holding some of the students and teachers together. I saw board members casting blame, and apparently, one could not even have an opinion, and to me, that's a bully board when someone tells you you cannot have your own voice. And then someone said, "There was betrayed trust." Can I tell you? I only trust one person in my life, and I can mention his name is God. But I don't trust what man does. I must follow through. I do not put my pen to paper until I read anything I'm going to sign, and I do not say yes or no unless I know what I'm voting on or doing. And I want to know, how far has the culture of keeping the peace got this board to this point? You cannot keep peace if your voice is not heard properly. No one can make you say yes, and no one can make you say no. But I have to tell you, trust is indeed broken. I have never seen such a mess with rift. To see the heartbreak that we experienced today in our school, losing someone great, it breaks my heart, because it took two years to get to break the trust so the kids trust that person, and it's been stolen. And to bring in someone else new, to have to regain trust for another two years when you're in a Title I school because we're dealing with trauma children, trauma parents, trauma situations. But I have to tell you something. We will rise from these ashes because we're educators. We will not let these children be abandoned, but we will fight like hell to stay afloat. I don't want to be on that barge with people. I want to be the Dr. Gladstone in my school, Old Town Elementary. And I'm a retired principal that came back out of retirement because I saw the need. Whatever your hands are touching right now to this board, I say it is not turning to gold. And I think we need 18 more hands to take the place. But we will rise from the ashes, and my first place would, I would have started not with the teachers, but I would have cleaned out the district office.
Rebbie Griffin.
Thank you, Dr. Moore and the board. I'm just a taxpayer who wanted to be a school teacher but couldn't get hired many years ago because I was stereotyped by a principal in the system. But I would like to commend these people for standing up and expressing your opinion. I think I didn't write a script because I feel like that the curtain is getting ready to fall in the last act of this play. Of what I've read, and Ms. Kuhn, and I stand to be corrected on any information, you were the one that spoke out about being ostracized. Am I correct? You can't speak, but if you are, thank you. Because the thing about it is, you can't have a board who group thinks and all goes along with everyone else on every decision if that's what happens. You have to think for yourself. Now, I don't know how this board got this way, assuming you don't get a fiscal report. So the CFO and Ms. McManus was running the ship by themselves? That's how it works. I mean, I've worked for companies that went out of business. I've lost my job, and it wasn't my fault. This was like these teachers. It's not their fault. So who's in control? Is anyone? But I will give you a solution to your problem. And I gave this to Mr. Martin, and he's forgotten that he was superintendent one time and was in dire need of money. You have a budget of about $612 million, if I stand corrected, in salaries and benefits. Start at the top with a superintendent with a 20% pay cut, graduate down to 1% for your custodian or whomever, and it may not be 20% at the top. Come up with a 7.5% pay cut, and you can keep every job intact. Because I think every educator, every principal, whatever their role is, would take a 7.5% across to save their cohort's jobs. It's very simple, very simple. That's how a team works together, and that's what I've been hearing. Teamwork on your part and on these educators' part. Thank you.
Aiden Saff.
Hello, my name is Aiden. I am in the, I mean, hello, my name is Aiden. I am 13 years old. I am in the eighth grade. I am attending East Forsyth Middle School. At my school is very low, very budget, and I have found out about a field trip at DC, and only 100 people could go, and I feel like that's not fair to others and my peers. Question for the board. How is, why is this all happening, and why is the decreasing?
Happening to my brother's school, and I go to John F. Kennedy. I know my name was not on the list, but I feel like y'all taking away teachers, our assistant principals, and mainly our testing coordinator, John F. Kennedy, and I feel like that's not right. Y'all taking teachers from us while y'all let people take money from y'all and moving away.
And I am an IEP student, and like, I can, I need help with other stuff, so yeah.
Jalisa Smallwood.
Hi. Hope you all are doing all right. So a few quotes I wanted to start with, and forgive the improper English of this first one. "If you stay ready, you ain't got to get ready." "Anyone can rattle off numbers, but do you know what's behind it?" Someone said that earlier. Maya Angelou also said, "When people show you who they are, believe them for the first time." Are we really doing better, though? I haven't seen an organizational chart. That'd be nice to see. How were decisions of this magnitude made without those things in place? If you don't understand the hierarchy, how can certain decisions that have already been made be made of that kind? Not the math isn't mathin'. I also sent you all an excerpt from the Guilford County School I also sent you all an excerpt from the Guilford County Schools Audit Report that has their organizational chart for reference. Shouldn't the individuals that you hired, shouldn't the individuals that you hired and relied on for information, shouldn't they have known better? I mean, for what they're being paid and all of the accolades that they were boosted, boosted up for having, that money should allow them to focus on their job duties every single day, every single day. But these teachers not knowing whether they gonna have a job, they going in, heart of a lion, acting like, acting like nothing's happening as it relates to the children. I found a 2017 article from the Richmond Free Press. Been doing a lot of research on Mr. Krantz's experience and just how he came, came here. We need somebody that's actually rooted in this community, that actually cares about this community, making decisions for this community. The article from the Richmond Free Press went on to quote, "Once again, Mr. Krantz kept the board in the dark, even as he spends money without school board knowledge. He could spend up to a certain amount on consultants without board consent, which he was also being investigated for, and the, the business was being investigated for it. His pattern of secrecy raises red flags about how the schools are operating and for whom." Did y'all not have that information before you hired him? Did y'all not do that due diligence? Did you just ignore the red flags, or? I, I, I'm just trying to understand. Your Starbucks order, $10. You got $9 in your bank account? You can't get Starbucks that morning. You gotta riff the pumpkin spice loaf. Let's not riff the teachers. Let's start from the top.
Leslie May.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Moore, and our greater community that's listening. My name is Leslie May. I work at Jefferson Elementary School. We are a family through and through. We are bound together by what many of us call our mom and dad, our beloved principal and assistant principal. We all got news last night that our dad is moving to a middle school and is being replaced by a .5 AP. In other words, we will be without assistant principal for two and a half days. Every store, every school has a story that continues to unravel. I'd like to share a bit of ours. We have a large EC population. Teachers have been cut and classes have been combined. IQs in one room range from 50 to 133. Students from general ed classrooms are sent to these smaller settings with teacher support to try to meet IEP goals. This isn't happening. Students that are on the autistic spectrum spend the majority of the time in that room covering their ears. There is hitting, chair throwing, and more. Since the EC staff has been cut, mom and dad often run down to the classroom to help keep everyone safe, but he's leaving. I have a dear friend next door. We teach second grade. She is a student that has come from a curriculum support classroom, which had a lead teacher, two full-time assistants, and six or seven other children. He is now spending the day in a general ed classroom with seventeen other students and a single teacher. During a typical day, she has to leave her seventeen students to escort him to the restroom for ten minutes and delay giving whole group instruction because he has to be watched so closely, he's at risk of putting dangerous things in his mouth. When she does get to teach, he's sitting in her lap trying to turn off her computer or prayer board. Sometimes he gets physical, and she has to call for her assistant principal to come and help. This probably happens about once a day. His loss will be detrimental in more ways than one. A wise colleague said to me this afternoon, when discussing the crisis after we came together, and our principal told us, anyway, we mourned our loss together. "We educators teach our children to claim responsibility for their actions, to show integrity, to be honest. I'm a teacher that never makes a child say they are sorry. The sorry needs to come within. If they choose to apologize, it means this. I am accountable for my actions. I am showing empathy, and I will try my best to make sure that this will never happen again. No one who created this crisis is claiming responsibility. No one is being honest or forthright about what really happened. No one is apologizing. It was just bad spending." My second graders made cards for two other staff members that lost their jobs this afternoon. At the end of the day, one of my students looked at me in earnest and said, "Ms. May, who will do their jobs?" I told him, "That's an excellent question. I wish I could've answered it." Thank you.
Richard May.
Good evening. My name is Richard May, and I wish to speak with regards to the budget. I spent fifteen years in the United States Army. I went to Iraq, and I was also in the military during the attacks of September 11th. After I left the United States Army, I spent about three and a half years as a government contractor. Some of the government contract work that I did was within tandem to missions and assignments with regards to the Defense Intelligence Agency. None of that means anything when I have the joy and pleasure of telling people that I am a dad. Not only a dad, but I am also having relatives that also work for the Winston-Salem Forest County School System, as well as friends who work for the Winston-Salem Forest County School System. However, for once, my having served in the United States military and also having worked in government office and in intelligence analyst work and everything gets to supersede the aspect of being a dad because of the fact that, for once, as a government employee, especially since I still work for the United States government now, I get to see budgets on a regular basis. I've seen federal budgets, and I've also seen state-level budgets. This money that has taken a walk, and let's just go ahead and say that, it has taken a walk, isn't a case of misplaced zeros and decimals or anything like that. If you wanted to, if you wanted to peel back the books, you could find out exactly from day one, point dot, when this money took a walk. However, it is alluded to by both social media and then also by the local news that this issue with the money being missing has, in theory, reached its way all the way up to the state government. It would appear the state government is not interested in assisting with regards to where this money has taken, disappeared to. So my question is, if integrity is to reign supreme with regards to finding out what has happened, at what point in time is anybody in this particular room, whether it's the people out here or the people here, at what point in time would they step up and maybe make the giant leap into contacting maybe the Raleigh Field Office for the FBI? Because it is possible, contact the FBI and then ask them to step in as a federal agency, once again pointing out that I'm a former government employee, have them come down and peel back the books to find out exactly what happened to this. Because I fear that if we don't find out what happened with this money, it could lead to further defunding within the state of North Carolina. To paraphrase Frank Herbert's novel, Doom, I fear that in regards to this issue, this is nothing less than plans within plans. Workers of the world unite, workers of the world unite, workers of the world unite. I see the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are moving on to our discussion items. We have four tonight. First, Dr. Effie McMillan, our Chief of Staff, Strategic Planning, will discuss the 2024-2025 Every Student Act Succeeds Act Accountability Data Release.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent Moore, and to the entire board. First, I just want to acknowledge, I think they may have already left, the three school leaders that spoke earlier about the great work that they are doing in their schools, but also to recognize all of our school leaders who give themselves tirelessly every single day to serve students, staff, and families. So, last week, on Wednesday, the Department of Public Instruction released the state school accountability results. So we are here to share our district's outcomes, our district and schools' outcomes. These reports, as you know, are released annually and are intended to provide a snapshot of student performance. It's important to note that the information shared tonight, these results reflect performance for a single year in tested areas, in student growth, and other measures. But we do know that standardized measures don't tell the full story of our schools, the work that they do every single day to serve and support students. With me is our Assistant Superintendent of Accountability and Continuous Improvement, Andy Kraft, and he will share outcomes and more details based on our results.
Thank you, Dr. McMillan, members of the board, superintendent. Happy to be able to share some good news with you tonight. We all know it's been a tough time lately, and isn't it nice that we can focus on the positives that are happening in our schools? I hate that our principals have already left, but we know that that's how we get this work done, is with our principals and the teachers here. Stephanie Wallace left. I talked with her earlier. We all know what it takes to get the work done, and those are the folks that do it. Dr. McMillan said clearly what it is that we're reporting tonight. That is the school performance grades. Those school performance grades are made up of two things. That is achievement and growth. And I want to speak a little bit more to you about the results that we saw across our district in the 24-25 school year. Here are some highlights. This is great. We're continuing to see an improvement overall. In fact, we've seen this improvement ever since COVID. Our kids continue to rise since the COVID pandemic, and we're encouraged by that. Forty-five of our schools met or exceeded expected growth. Fourteen improved their performance composite. Twelve schools improved their letter grades, and it's seven of our schools came off the low-performing list. These schools all exceeded expected growth. You know what that means? I know you know what that means, our folks who are watching at home. If you send a kid to our schools, they're gonna be significantly better in these schools than they would be at other schools across the state of North Carolina. We're encouraged by that. And I think I'm gonna dig in a second. I'll do it now, and I'll mention this. Atkins High School and Reagan High School are within the top 1% of growth in the state of North Carolina. That's, that's, that's fantastic, and we're very, very proud of their work. They deserve that. Thank you. All right. These schools are no longer on the low-performing list, and you probably recognize some of them because I spoke to you earlier. Walkertown Middle already spoke to you. You already heard from Forest Park, and you heard from Kennedy. But there are some other schools on the list we're particularly encouraged to see that they came off the low-performing list. They did so by either getting a C or higher or exceeding expected growth. This is the distribution of our A-through-F school grades. You can see the majority of our schools do receive an A, B, or C, and we're proud to see that. And we also recognize there is room for improvement in all of our schools and our scores. This is, this is the distribution of growth within our schools, and we see that 63% of our schools met or exceeded expected growth. That is our majority. And obviously, we want to move those schools that did not meet expected growth to, to improve their outcomes. So, let's, let's look at overall proficiency, and I'll, I'll just give you the headline right now. We are up in third-through-eighth grade reading. We're up in third-through-eighth grade math. That, that increase has been an increase since the pandemic. We continue to improve year over year, and that's encouraging. You might ask, wait, what's going on here with science? Are they hiding something from me? Science test was re-normed last year, and for that reason, it's not appropriate to compare the 24-25 science scores to previous years. These are the schools with the highest overall achievement increase. Again, you heard from some of these earlier, like Walkertown Middle and Kennedy. We're also proud to see Ward Elementary, Forest Park, and Hall Woodward. You might ask, what are these asterisks on there? And we know TBJ's proud of her work and others with opportunity culture. These are all opportunity culture schools. Seems like this is something we need to research a little deeper and say, what's working in these opportunity culture schools, and how do we replicate that elsewhere? These schools have the highest growth index, and I mentioned to you earlier, Atkins and Reagan being in the top 1%, but these other schools as well, like Forest Park, Conoc, and Sedg Garden, also exceeded. If you get a 2.0 or higher, you exceed expected growth. That is, how confident are we that you are really growing kids? The answer here is, we're very confident that these schools are growing kids. These are our top five in the district. Highest increase in that three-through-eight reading overall, you see Kimberly Park, Sedg Garden, Ashley Forest Park, and Conoc. Very encouraged to see the, the work that these schools are doing for kids. You also see significant increases in math as well. We see those. Wait, I seem to be mentioning the same schools over and over, don't I? Like Walkertown Middle, right? So what we say to ourselves is, we know what the answers are. I heard some of the speakers say that earlier. We know what's working in these schools, and we need to ask ourselves, how do we replicate these positive results across the entire district? All right. I've, I've been talking about three-through-eight as a, as a whole, when those scores are all rolled up. But now, I'll break it down to the specific grades. I'm starting with the subject of ELA, and you see that only one grade level went down. Only third-grade reading went down. The other grades, four, five, six, seven, and eight, all went up in reading. You'll see, actually, middle school in just a second. But in math, all of our scores went up, in elementary and middle. And you see some of the highest score increases on the right-hand side. This is a busy slide, I recognize, but we don't wanna, you know, overlook anyone. We don't, we, we wanna make sure that everybody gets their recognition. So what we've done here is, we've reported the highest increases by subject and by grade. So you can read that on your own, and we can, you know, this is posted online for our folks at home to, to see. Here's the middle school results, and as I said earlier, every grade has increased in reading, except for that third grade, and every grade increased in math. That's encouraging. There's, right? We know it's a tough time, but aren't we happy to see the positive results because of teachers and principals in our district doing the hard work? This, again, highlights the middle schools that have the largest increase. We're proud of these schools. This is by grade and by subject, and, and they deserve credit for their increases. In high school, we don't take the EOGs, the end-of-grade tests. We take end-of-course tests. Those are in the areas of biology, English II, Math I, and Math III. The only place that we saw a decrease in high school EOCs was in Math I, but you noticed there that we saw an increase in English II and Math III. Again, science was re-normed this year, and for that reason, it's not appropriate to compare those results year over year. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see those schools that had the largest increases by subject area. So, do we still have work to do? Yeah, the answer is yes. You see on this slide, 2019, our pre-pandemic numbers. And what the, this is all of our subjects rolled up, all of our EOGs, all of our EOCs. And you ask the question of all the tests that were administered, what percentage of students were proficient on those tests? You can see in 2019, our pre-pandemic numbers, the black line representing all of our students at 55.7. You also see that we've continued to increase since that low right after the pandemic of 38.2, that today now we're up to 49.2. But we, we, we just can't, we can't improve unless we're gonna serve all students in our district. I know you know that, and so we see that we need a specific emphasis, a particular emphasis, on improving our African-American, Hispanic outcomes in our district, but nobody's at 90%, which is our goal. And so, so all students, all subgroups need attention to improve. There are some other additional outcomes that are measured with this release of the state accountability model, and one is the four-year cohort graduation rate. That, that answers the question, how many of our students who started in ninth grade four years ago graduated this year? The answer is 86%. You can see that dramatic increase we've had since 2008, and then we seem to have leveled off. There was a rule change there in 2018. I won't get into those details. But we do see a high rate. We're close to our goal. From 86 to 90, we're only four percentage points away. Dr. Stokes and her team, they really do deserve a lot of credit. I think I get into the schools here in just a second. Yeah, these schools have hit that greater-than-95% mark. You know, some of this is just cleaning up the paperwork, understanding where these kids have gone. Did they go and enroll in another district, in another state, even in another country? And because of Dr. Stokes and her team, we know the answer to that question. And so, so that's why, that's why we're seeing improvement in our results. This graph is busy, but what you, you can see here is the results of different subgroups. So you have genders broken out, male and female. And our female students are outperforming our male students in terms of graduation. Our white students are outperforming African-American, Hispanic students. And then, in, we have three other categories. That is EDS, LEP, and students with disabilities. So you can look at that at your convenience. So I mentioned those schools, and these are the schools who had the highest increase in their cohort graduation rate. You see the percentage point that's represented here, like Walkertown High School with a seven percentage point increase, Carver, Parkland, Tabor, North Forsyth East, and Kennedy. And again, Dr. Stokes and her team really do a lot of hard work with our principals and our guidance teams to make sure our kids are in school. Sometimes we have dropouts, and they, they need to drop back in, and they go and pursue those kids to see that that's what happens. But, but we could also break it down by our subgroups, because as I mentioned a second ago, the outcomes for our various subgroups are not universal. We see very different outcomes among our different racial subgroups and other subgroups as well. And so, we're encouraged here to see these schools who've really improved their outcomes by subgroup. And again, we seem to keep mentioning some of these schools over and over. An example is Kennedy. So, the results speak for themselves. We know what works, and it's in our buildings. Getting to the end here, and ACT is another measure. This is a measure of career readiness, excuse me, college readiness. You, you might say, you know, Andy, what are you doing with these red vertical lines here? They're in there because the cut score changed. The cut score changed between 21 and 22, and so that helps to explain the decrease in scores from 50% down to 39. And then, the cut score changed again between 24 and 25. That helps to explain the increase that we saw this past year. Are we happy we saw an increase? Absolutely. But that happiness is tempered by the fact that it's really more of a result of the cut score increase. And finally, no, excuse me, it's not, I, I broke out the ACT results for you here by subgroup, and you see that these subgroup results mirror what I showed you earlier when I rolled up all test scores for our district. Finally, work- Finally, Work Keys. Work Keys is a measure that's administered to our CTE, our Career and Technical Education completers. So not all students take this test. Only those students that choose to take a Level II CTE class. And yeah, we can see the results over time. You know, they've plateaued. They've been fairly flat this past year, down by a tenth of a percent. But I do want to direct your attention, though, briefly, to the bottom of this slide. And look what's happened over time. You had 924 CTE completers back in 2019, and today you have 1,600. That's fantastic. What that means is, kids are taking these CTE classes, and they're taking higher-level CTE classes. We talk about the trades and things like that, and the importance of those things, and you're seeing that our kids are buying into and staying with their CTE classes, and I think we can be very encouraged by that. I've also broken out the Work Keys results by our three largest racial subgroups, and you see those results here on this slide. So if you have some questions about the data, I'm happy to answer those questions. If you want to know, Andy, what are we going to do in response to this? I know Superintendent Moore is happy to answer some of those.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
Yes, two things I want to point out. I want to thank the staff in the schools, because our trend is going up, but we have yet to get back to pre-pandemic numbers, and I have a concern about that. And the slide that you had on the school growth, how Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools compared to similar North Carolina schools, I just thought that was a little misleading, the title of it, because we wasn't comparing it to anything. That's just what our growth is.
No, ma'am. So I'm glad you brought that up, and let me explain to you why it's titled that. It's titled correctly, and I'll explain to you why. Because what growth does is it compares schools to each other across the state. In other words, if your school exceeded, what that means is, it did better than schools across the state of North Carolina. Does that make sense? So the growth measure is a comparison across the state, and that's why we use that title.
Okay. Because what I did is, I looked at individual schools like Wake County, Charlotte Beck, Greensboro, and Durham. Of course, they were much higher for us than exceeded them when you looked at both of them together, and that's why I questioned the title of that.
Understood. Yeah. Yeah, you're right. There are other districts that have a larger percentage of schools exceeding expected growth, and we too would like to see that increase. But you're right, in terms of other districts, what do their percentages look like? Some of them look better than ours. You're right.
Board Member King.
This may not be a question for you, maybe for Catty or someone else, but you did mention the duplicating efforts. Obviously, we're doing something right in some of our schools. It seems like a lot of those might be opportunity culture schools. So what are we doing to duplicate those efforts? Are we looking at internal PD? What are we doing to capitalize on this?
So if I could just speak briefly to the opportunity culture piece. I see it as an interesting, worthwhile anecdote to explore further as we see that in the results. I don't think that we deployed opportunity culture with some sort of logic model on the front, that progress monitored goals and that sort of thing, like you sometimes do when you do a new initiative. But I do think that seeing it and what you see in the literature about it allow us an opportunity to explore that a little more closely, find out what kind of training the teachers had taken, how it was deployed in the schools, and see what can be replicated in other places, and if you begin to replicate, applying the logic model to it so that you can track it. I really think that's the kind of thing you do in anything that you deploy in a school system. You need to start with a logic model that tells you what the data is, that says this is something that you need to do, and then you posit the steps along the way and the timeline, and how you're going to progress monitor and check whether or not you're making progress, and if you need to make course corrections. Because at the end of the day, what you want to be able to say is, this is the difference that was made, and this is why. And that's hard to do, in education in particular, because a lot of it is dependent on the people and is dependent on the attention to what is it that comes out at the end of every report? Fidelity of implementation. Whenever you see that in a summary, you're always going to have questions about fidelity of implementation with something. And so I think as we grow our work and the things that we see, we need to ensure that we're monitoring from beginning to end so that we can actually make those conclusions.
Board Member Miller.
Yes, thank you, Andy. This is looking good. I'm glad to see it's continuing to trend upwards. I taught third grade reading for over 15 years in this district, and I'm just curious, do we have any idea why the scores are down in third grade reading?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think it's somewhat tough to answer, because you know, what we have before third grade is DIBELS. And how predictive is DIBELS of an EOG score? So, no. I like the way that Dr. Moore described just a second ago. Did we go into this with a clear logic model and tracking these things and implementation? So no, we don't have a very good answer to that question.
And I'll just echo the fact that the formative assessments that we use with DIBELS, teachers complain quite frequently that trying to correlate the results of those to what you actually see in the EOG outcomes, it just doesn't happen. And so I think that is really a function of what the DIBELS and the formative assessments are doing versus what the EOG is doing. And the EOG is an environment and an application for assessment that does not really replicate what you're doing in the classroom every day and the formative assessments that you're giving in the classroom every day. So that's a disconnect that has always existed between how we progress monitor and follow the trajectory of students in the classroom versus how they perform on that one day on that exam. It is the exam that we have. All exams give us some information that we need to take a look at and respond to, but that disconnect is real.
Okay, follow-up. Piggyback onto the question. Are we still using Wonders curriculum in third grade? Is that?
Yes.
Or is that?
Here comes Paula.
So just as a reminder, our adoption expired this year, and so what we did, we do have some of the support resources that are, were, like, the anthology pieces that we continue to use because we purchased those, but we had in-house teachers to embed aligned to the science of reading, using the Phonics Lesson Plan templates to help us until we can get enough money to purchase a full core adoption.
So we used our own in-house. We did use in-house for this.
This year. This is the first year. Yes.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. So I have two questions and then a request for some information that I'd like my colleagues' support on getting. So the first question is, last year, our data in seventh and eighth grade wasn't the best, and it was sort of, if I'm remembering correctly, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed like it was sort of across the board, we were having, we had issues in seventh and eighth grade. So what did we do differently in seventh and eighth grade this year to make these improvements?
Yeah, no, it's a good question to answer. We would need to do some research, whether that's qualitative and/or quantitative. I mean, yeah.
Hello.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. So we did focus intentionally on middle school because of the data we had last year. Our focus this year with all the principals were three major systems, and you heard lots of our principals talk about it tonight, and that was data-informed instruction, DDI, observation and feedback, which is coaching, and culture. So those, that's the through line that you heard from our principals. I used some of the grant funds that we have for leadership development to provide additional supports for our middle schools, including supporting them with practice labs. So they came together and they practiced together, walked classes together, practiced unpacking and analyzing data together, so that there was definitely an intentional focus on moving middle school, and we're going to continue some of that.
Thank you. So my next question, I think, is, Mr. Kraft, you can answer. So when you answered Board Member Brown Gaither's question around, or it might not have been her question, but it was somebody's question around growth, my understanding was that growth, is growth determined by the education value-added assessment system? Or is it?
Yes. Or the EVA system, which are relative.
But I thought it was, is it not based on the scores from the previous year? Like, can you explain just how that works?
Sure. Yeah, right. Because if it were just the scores from the previous year, right, you have a criterion reference growth or norm reference growth. So to be simple, it is, how much did your kids grow? Is that more or less than the rest of the state? Does that make sense?
Yes.
So it's not just, I grew them this much, so I exceeded. It's, how much did my kids grow? Well, if the rest of the state did more than that, then you didn't meet or exceed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it's relative. It's relative measure compared to the rest.
Okay, will you correct what I'm getting ready to say if I say it wrong?
Sure.
It's kind of like a bell curve. So every year, they look at the, how students did based on prior to the year before as an entire state of North Carolina, you know, and 25% around-ish will exceed, 50%-ish will meet, and the other 25% will not meet. And so you have an idea of how much your kids should grow in one year, but if the county next door is knocking it out of the park, it impacts what happens, what your data shows. And so I think that it's a hard, it's a hard nut to crack in terms of knowing how far your children, students, need to get to in order to exceed growth, because it's dependent on what every other school system and school is doing in the state of North Carolina at the same time.
That's right. Well, one way that I've found it easiest is during the pandemic, everybody went down, and yet, some people exceeded expected growth. Well, how can that be? The answer is, some people didn't go down as far as everybody else, so that's exceeding. Does that make sense? So thus saying, it's a relative measure.
Okay. And then there are a few slides, somewhere in here, you had, you had listed, there was a distribution of how many, the letter grades, the letter grade slide? The request for information, because I think this might take some effort, and so I'd like to see if my colleagues would find this helpful. I would love to see a kind of distribution amongst the other large urbanists, like maybe the top, like, four or five, to see what percentage, these percentages around, like, their performances as well. I mean, we all know that the whole letter grade thing is problematic and not necessarily an indication of what's happening in schools. I just think it'd be interesting to see, because obviously, these, some of these districts are bigger than us, but it would be interesting to see if they have the same percentage of schools that are, that have these letter grades.
No doubt. That'd be easy to do. Yes, sir. Happy to do that for you.
Any other questions?
Someone just going to assume, based on Chair Bohannon's request, that there is interest in looking at that data across other districts as well?
Board Member Ball.
Andy, I know we've talked about this for years, and that is the closure of the gap. When we look at page 20, does that show us anything? Is the gap closing, or am I looking at the wrong diagram?
It is not.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to master. Thank you.
Yeah, this is one way to look at it, perhaps, is the slide you're referring to. There are some other slides that show this. And yeah, the clear answer is no. We have not been successful in raising the achievement of our lowest-performing students.
Right, right.
And if I could be so bold as to suggest, it might be helpful to look at something similar with peer districts around what those gaps look like as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's something that I've always, you know, questioned and talked about and asked all the way from 2014 to 2018. You know, is there a district that's doing it well, and what is it that they are, that they are employing that we need to do different? You know, because I'm glad we're making growth, but to me, it's just sad to see our Black students at the bottom.
Yes, sir. It is. Agreed. We can add that to Vice Chair Bohannon's request, provide that for you for other districts as well.
Any other questions?
I'm just going to add one other note, and the cabinet has heard me say this. When we look at how to ensure that our lowest-achieving subgroups' students are catching up, that we're getting them to where they need to be on grade level or above grade level, you're going to have to make more than a year's worth of growth in a year.
That's right.
So you're going to have to exceed growth. You cannot meet growth and catch up when you're behind. So I think that is, and thinking about it that way, and how our principals think about it that way, I think sets a context, even though it's not a defined finish line, because the growth changes every year, but understanding that more than a year's worth of growth is what's necessary for students who are not at grade level to achieve in order to get at grade level is just, I think, an important way to think about it.
Board Member Crowley.
Thank you. Do we have any school in our 80-plus schools that had less disparity among subgroups? Like, is there any school that is modeling where students of different races are closer in achievement?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't want to spout off the top of my head and be incorrect. There are some ways I can answer your question, such as going to growth. You're asking about achievement, but let's think about growth just a second. And we do see some schools having great growth with our students who are under, with our African-American Hispanic subgroups. So that's really promising. What the superintendent just said is exactly right. The only way for those gaps to close is if a child has a blue teacher, a teacher that exceeds two years in a row, right? And the likelihood of that, unfortunately, is very low. So those schools who have a larger number of blue teachers would be those schools who, and we know the subgroup growth, so we can answer the question that way. What's challenging for us to answer your question is that so many of our schools are racially isolated, right? And so if you say to yourself, like, oh, do they not have a gap in their building? Well, you know, they have five white students, or you see what I mean. And so talking about the gap in their building is not useful. Does that make sense? So asking the question, are they raising achievement of their kids year-over-year, is the more useful question. Does that make sense?
Well, I was just wondering if our, if we have an example of that in our diverse schools, especially like, like, I'm wondering about a school like Atkins. Is that where we're seeing, are we seeing it there?
Probably. And again, like, I don't want to do that off the top of my head. I think the answer is yes, and I'm happy to get it for you. Happy to get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
You know what? I remember when I was on this board, 24-18, we really started focusing on closing the gap, and someone, I'm not quite sure who it was, did some research, and we saw where there were some schools where the gap was, was closing. But I guess, once again, I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but, and maybe Reverend Watts could kind of confirm this, but since we've been a part of the school system, I think I started in 1988. Yeah, 1980, Lord, that's a long time, isn't it? 1988, we've always heard that we are going to close the gap, and it just seems like something in there, we don't, you know, we don't make it, but.
Yes, sir.
We'll just keep plotting along.
Yeah. Is that true?
Yeah, historical data clearly shows that we've always had a wide gap, and we've somehow just stays, even the growing achievement, the gap never closes. So, yeah. And it's been over 30 years, the same kind of trajectory.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next, Dr. Chris Weichart, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will discuss the FY 2026 budget amendment and transfer number three.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent Moore, board members. Sam, before we look over our budget amendment three and transfers, as we get started here, I just want to just remind, when we look at budget amendments, this is where we recognize additional revenue that the district has received, either from carryover funds or or new revenues, and this is where we allocate it to a purpose code for a category. So our first one here is our local, for local fund expense. This is where the board requested the commissioners to allow us to repurpose some monies to, with the purpose of paying back the Department of Public Instruction for our non-instructional person, support personnel deficit. So you see here, it's about $8.5 million. You can see it was allocated between various purpose codes, which aligned to where the deficits were, and those monies have been paid to the Department of Public Instruction to reduce that debt. Our next category is federal. These are going to be all carryover funds or unused from previous fiscal years. We have to recognize them. Once the calculations are finished, and then we confirm with the Department of Public Instruction, we can then recognize those revenues and put them in these purpose codes. So you range from, number one here is pre-K, for exceptional children's pre-K. Number two is PRC 60. That is for use of, for EC students. Number three is a language acquisition, which is for title, it's a version of Title III, but it's a little different than the one we talked about last time. This is for language acquisition for increased student population. Due to our Hispanic or ESL population increases, we receive specific funds for that. And then four and five are also specific funds for exceptional children's, very specific funds, purposes. The last one here is on fund date for our budget amendments. This is our revenues we've received for our residency program. We have our own hen house residency program where the participants do pay, to participate. It's a much lower cost than they would if they went to a college to add those credentials, but that monthly, you know, that payroll here comes for a month where they did their summer institute. As we move forward here, we have budget transfers. The first one is here, is in Fund Eight. It's, when it, we speak of transfers, it's going to be revenue neutral, so at the very bottom, we're going to have a zero. It's just where we're moving money between the purpose codes or the functions of the funds. So here is where we have Wallace monies in, from year five. So this is carryover funds, once again, and we're just moving monies between the PRC, excuse me, between the purpose codes. The next few here are very similar information, just kind of presented in a little different format. One thing I do want to point out, just for those at home, is the color coding on these things go throughout. So if you see yellow on the first page, and you come down to the third page, that's where they're combining. So here's where you have your amendment of your additional revenue in Fund Two, and as we said earlier, that's money that we're using, that we used to pay back the debt to DPI from last year. You'll see here on state fund, there is no action. There's no amendment or transfer on this amendment between state funds. Here's our federal grant monies, and this is all the ones that we referred to earlier, all the carryover monies that we have from the year before, where we're asking the board to recognize and receive those monies. This is Fund Eight. This is with both your Wallace monies and your residency money. So the column there in green is where we're receiving the money from the residency program, and then the transfer money is from the Wallace work that we looked at on page two. And then here in capital outlet, you can see that we've had no amendments or transfers. Same for child nutrition and the daycare funds. And this is just a summary of where our revenues are from the interim budget resolution through number, amendment number three, any transfers, and then a revised budget of $628 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Vice Chair Bohannon?
So I, I need to understand the, the relationship between the budget amendment and the actual expense of the money itself? Because I thought that the money from the, so we've already paid the state back, like that's already been reflected and acknowledged, and so the amendment is coming now to do that? So is one, is, were we not supposed to amend it before we spent it, or?
Typically, yes. The board, when you, when the board requested the money from the county, one of the stipulations was a, an understand that we would pay the money within so many days. So I think in this situation, the board had requested that money, had dedicated the expense to it. So, and I believe, I want to say that maybe the chair person had to write a letter stating we would do that. So that's why we went probably a little out of order. Typically, you're correct. You would recognize the amendment and then do the expense.
We had seven days from receipt of the fund to make sure that the funds, to pay it.
Can?
That was in the ordinance adopted by the county.
Right. So the county adopted a resolution basically requiring that we, once we get those funds, that we pay those funds within a certain time period, and that's how we've been ahead and did it. I understand that in that particular, for that, that particular pot of money, that is why we did it. But I just want to make sure that in a normal environment, we would amend the budget first and then expend the money.
Correct.
That's correct. Absolutely. Yes, sir. So.
That was my exact question. I was going to ask what Alex asked. I think, I appreciate that this was the circumstances, however, what, I get that, you know, we won't do that in the future. How, other than saying we won't do it in the future, where is our assurance? Or how do we know that this isn't? I mean.
I think it would have been helpful, perhaps, then, knowing that we were having to not follow the process, to make sure the board knew before we brought it tonight that we had not followed the process. Yep.
Fair.
So we just, can we have a verbal commitment that in the future, that will be done?
For me, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, yes, Board Member Crowley?
Yes, and looking at that first section, it says payment to other governmental units. $643,000. I'm assuming that's the charter school payment portion that had to go out of that $8.5 million?
That is correct. The local current expense, when you see other government units, would be a charter school payment. When you see it on federal, that's when the private schools get their equity portion. So you'll see it, you'll see it, you'll see it twice usually. So for example, here, you'll see government, you know, units. Private schools also can request a portion based on their number of students that qualify for Title I. Equitable services, you've approved contracts for that in the past.
And it's called private school equity? Is that like an oxymoron?
Yeah, it's an equitable service for the private schools. I may be using that term incorrectly.
Okay.
I may have my words a little backwards.
It is equitable services, is what it's called.
Equitable, thank you. Had it round the second try.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Wykert. So we're moving on to the superintendent search update. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the timeline for the superintendent search. The vice chair and I met with Summit Search Solutions on Thursday, August 28th, for an introductory meeting and to discuss the potential timeline for the superintendent search process. So during the follow-up meeting on September 4th, we had a conversation about actually how realistic that proposed timeline was. The proposed timeline had us potentially finishing the search before the Christmas break. We recognized the need to be in good financial standing prior to the next superintendent coming onboard, while also recognizing the important and continuing and difficult and necessary work of our interim superintendent. So as part of our, also as part of our bi-weekly reporting to the State Board of Education, their board has asked us for a superintendent search update on a regular basis. And so they have also offered to help us with choosing an interim superintendent after Ms. Moore's contract is over. They feel, and we do too, that this would allow the necessary time to get our board back in good fiscal shape while ensuring the, you know, the necessary time to complete a thorough and detailed search. So the purpose of this conversation amongst us this evening is to ask for some consensus and guidance from the board about the need to appoint an interim, and specifically, the need to appoint an interim through the school year to get us back on the path of fiscal wholeness, and to talk about the, the help that the State Board of Education is offering to help us in assistance with this interim superintendent. So I'd like to open up this discussion for the board. Any comments? Yes, vice chair, I mean, excuse me, Board Member Watts?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chaplin, Kaplan. So I do want to say that, based on our conversations with the superintendent search firm, that it's going to be a challenge to find someone in place by December. So I, I think to look for another interim that's competent, that knows our financial situation, and not rush into finding a superintendent, I think will benefit our district.
Any other comments about that? Vice Chair Bohannon?
So I would also just say that the, the other piece about this too is that, you know, our interim superintendent has done and is doing a fantastic job, but she has also let us know that it is not possible for her to continue after the end of November. And so we just, I think it's important for us to, to be able to navigate the next superintendent search process with an expanded timeline, to make sure that we're getting the stakeholder feedback that we need to, and that we're not rushing the process, and, and also that we are, we get, we get an interim that can come in and can build on that work that she's already started, you know, as we, as we try to move forward and get back on track.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
So when we talk about the state assisting with the interim search, is this like how before they, they brought us candidates who they thought would be qualified for our situation? They'll bring us, okay.
Yes. And, and Ms. Moore can speak on this, but I believe this is a normal process for the State Board of Education to help, along with the School Board Association.
It is. The two folks that people tend to go to, school boards go to in North Carolina to get some help with an interim search would be the School Board Association or the State Board of Education. Yep.
Any other discussion? So I'd like to have a consensus, a show of hand. Do we want to extend and extend the superintendent search and look toward, look toward an interim superintendent after the tenure of Ms. Moore? And also to assist the help of the State Board of Education? Can I have a show of hands?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So we took those as two separate?
Two separate ones.
Extending the search?
Yes.
Then separately?
What does that mean?
A show of hands to extend the search of the timeline for our superintendent search. Thank you. That is unanimous. And then secondly, to have the State Board of Education assist us with the interim search process. And who would not be in favor? Thank you. So it's not, it's not an action item, but it is consensus, and the consensus is to go and extend the timeline of our superintendent search and to use the, the expertise of the State Board of Education.
Board Chair, I also have another. As far as extending the contract for the search for a superintendent, and we said that the foundation was willing to fund the majority of that, how is that going to affect the funding for the search, since we're extending it?
This should not impact that funding at all. We have until August of 2026 for the, the funds, the 40,000 funds to be available to us for the superintendent search. You're welcome. So if there's no other bits of discussion on that, then Ms. Catty Moore, our interim superintendent, will give us a budget update.
Thank you. So as always, I'm going to start with any updates that we have from the '24, '25 budget deficit. I'm, I'm moving into more exact numbers as we move forward, so that we, we have a little bit more specificity, and as we start making payments and those sorts of things. So the three big vendor payments, we've been, we've been messaging 16.1. It is now just over 15 million. And you see the exact numbers for each of the three entities there. You will recall that we made some payments at the end of the school year to, towards the ESS, and ESS also had a bill that came in late in the year. So between all of that, the, the ESS amount is really the reason that it's down from 16.1 to 15. But the total that we owe the three now is just over 15 million. We owe DPI $3.4 million, that's rounded. We owe our child nutrition fund $2 million. I kind of refer those to the known sort of hard debt. We still are estimating 15 to 20 million that we owe ourselves in local capital and grant funds. That just means that we spent local dollars from some areas in other areas. I think there's some pieces with the state over, over, over expenses that we are also going to be seeing, and that is what we need to wait for in terms of what happens with our audits to really get a handle on that number. Any funds that we owe ourselves will show as negatives in our year-end fund balance in the annual audit. So we are going to have findings when the audit comes out this year. Thought it was helpful to talk a little bit about progress being made to reduce the budget deficits, and some payments have been made at this point. In July of 2025, we were messaging the budget deficit estimate at $46.1 million. It was 42 towards the end of the school year, but we had lots of other bills that were coming in during the month of June, and at the end, and even some that came in after June. So it was 46.1 was our estimate in July. We made $1.1 million worth of payments to ESS. We've made the $7,925,000 payment to DPI. So our revised deficit estimate now is at 37, just over $37 million. That figure will be finalized after we've got the '24, '25 audit. And just a note, because several folks have asked about this, the DPI payment was less than the 8.5 million in funding flexibility that we requested from the county because of the requirements of providing a portion of the funds to charter school. We did have a phone call with them yesterday for a long period of time, and we are making some movement, but they've asked for some other stuff, and we've given them some other stuff, and so it's still moving on. We have no final numbers there. Turning now to fiscal accountability, and talking first about the update from the State Board of Education. On September 2nd, we did, we presented the appeal of the 1% interest debt to DPI to a panel of the State Board of Education. On the 4th, the State Board voted to reduce the interest rate to 4% per month effective October 1. There were also some additional stipulations in the communication and motion. We must submit a good faith repayment plan to the BizOP, which is the Business Operations Panel, on November 4th. So we will be returning to the State Board meeting on November 4th for that appeal panel to consider the good faith repayment effort that we will present. The stipulation is that repayments begin no later than January 20th. And in the letter from the State Board of Education, and I'll come back to this in just a few minutes, "We expect that your annual financial audit will be completed in time for your board to appear before the BizOP Appeal Committee on November 4th and to present this required plan." That is in the communication from the State Board of Education. Moving on to the Office of the State Auditor. On August 19th, State Auditor Dave Bolick requested that the State Board of Education and the Local Government Commission, the LGC, and this is a quote from his letter, "exercise its authority under North Carolina General Statute as listed to jointly hire an audit firm to review the internal control procedures of the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools." That was a request from the auditor. On September 4th, the State Board of Education reviewed the special report from the State Auditor, which identified multiple material findings indicating a significant management failures within the district. After careful consideration and consultation with the State Auditor's office, the State Board of Education voted to initiate a review of the district's internal controls. So they acceded to the request from the State Auditor. It is important to note that the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools is responsible for the cost of any additional audit or review that is conducted. Our audit firm that we are contracted with is Forest Mizzards. On June 24th, we contracted with Forest Mizzards for an annual independent audit of our '24, '25 finances. This is the standard annual audit of our financial statements. On August 14th, we met with the, an auditor from Forest Mizzards to discuss the financial statements, the audit timeline, and the scope of work. The firm has completed the majority of the interim planning procedures, interim compliance procedures, and has begun final fieldwork procedures in liaising with our management in the district. The final report on the contract is due by December 31st, which is the state deadline for the audit to be submitted. I will say, however, that in talking to our audit firm, so this, this deadline was just changed. It was earlier than this in the past, and the LGC changed it to December 31st, beginning this year. However, I have asked, I had asked Forest Mizzards, and they had agreed to complete all of our work and try to get our audit done by the end of October, beginning of November, so that we would have our final numbers as soon as possible. So the, the work, the timeline that they have submitted is to get it completed before December 31st. Continuing on the contract. So I reviewed with Forest Mizzards the State Board of Education decision to hire an auditor. So I reviewed with Forvis Mazars the State Board of Education decision to hire an audit firm to review the internal control procedures and the impact on the current Winston-Salem-Forsyth County audit engagement. So who'd have thunk that the State Board choosing to engage an external auditor based on the State Auditor's request aligns or has an impact on their request that we expect that your annual financial audit be completed in time for your board to appear before the BizOP Appeal Committee on November 4th? So I'm repeating that because the State Board was expecting our audit to be done in time for this because knowing the extent of our fund balance deficit helps us with planning for how we will do a repayment plan for all the entities that we owe. So Forvis Mazars has requested a revision to the current contract with us to amend the due date for the final report. The due date would change from December 31st, 2025, to unknown on the revised contract. So Forvis Mazars has sent us a revised contract with an accompanying memo, and I want to highlight a couple of the things that are in this memo. This information is attached in Simbli. So in the September 5th memo, Forvis Mazars talks about their current contract scope of services. It's not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control that might be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and therefore, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies may exist that were not identified. This is what a standard financial statement audit does every year. It is not a comprehensive audit. It isn't for any school system in the state. So they have a portion of their audit is to look at some of our internal control procedures, but not necessarily into the depth that this now audit that has been requested by Bolick and approved by the State Board of Education and the LGC will require. So, and we don't really know the scope of that audit engagement yet. So in the memo, Forvis Mazars is also seeking clarification of the State Board action. They say in their memo, "It is unclear how these, those procedures, which are designed for the purpose of planning our audit, relate to the procedures that will be performed in response to the Norclana State Board of Education's request." So the audit that will be performed based on who the State Board and the LGC choose to do Bolick's internal controls audit, review, they use those terms interchangeably, but they are not interchangeable in the accounting world, could have information about internal control procedures that would need to be considered by Forvis Mazars in their audit of our financial statements prior to issuing their final report. So there's, what they're saying is, "We don't know what this next audit is supposed to cover, but it's very possible that that next audit will include information or findings that we should consider in our final report." Next slide, please. So considering the other audit information, "Since the statute does not clearly specify what work the other audit firm may perform, the scope of the procedures to be performed by another firm in response to the State Board of Education's request is unknown, as are the results of those procedures. The results of those procedures may contain information that is material to our conclusions." There's something else in the auditing world about dual engagements at the same time that shouldn't be happening for the same work, and that's what the concern is here. So in their conclusion in their memo, as a result, this is from Forvis Mazars again, "We must pause our work until those procedures are known and completed, and we can determine the impact, if any, on our scope, planned procedures, and conclusions as they relate to the audit of the financial statements and compliance." So as you read this, the concern, of course, is the need that we have to have our financial statement audit complete, review, and done so that we can really assess the extent of where our negative fund balances are and our financial position from 2425 and what pausing the work would look like. Because if they're changing the due date from December 31st, which is when it is due based on the LGC and the State Board language, it means potentially the final audit report that we are looking for in October, November is now sometime in the spring. And we did that last year, y'all. So, next slide, please. So in talking with Forvis Mazars, they will continue their current work on the current timeline. They're scheduling their time to be onsite with us at the end of September, where they will be meeting with staff and reviewing data and trial balances and other things that are outside of the scope of my area of expertise. They do expect that if we are providing them with all the information that we have already agreed to provide them, that they can work through the end of September and in October, and they have agreed that they, at the, well, I'll talk about that in just a minute, but they are, they have agreed to come to the Board on October 28th and provide a substantive update of where they are in their work. They will not provide the final report, and they cannot provide that final report until the other audit engagement is done. But they can provide us with a good bit of information that will help us answer the questions we need answered prior to receiving that final report. So they have provided the revised audit engagement contract. It's loaded in Simbli, and the accompanying memo that I've drawn pieces from are also loaded in Simbli. They will provide if they are going to, our Board Chair has to sign the contract amendment that changes the due date. They will provide then that amended contract to the LGC. That is one of the requirements that our audit firm must provide, the contract to the LGC. And then we will provide the revised audit engagement contract and accompanying memo to the State Board of Education. So we'll send it to the State Board, the audit company will send it to the LGC. The final audit report cannot be provided until the firm can review the findings from the independent audit requested by the State Board of Education and the LGC. So I hope I have explained that well enough. They could not be here this evening, so I practiced saying it a number of times. I know I understand it, but I don't know that I always say it properly. They will continue their work, Forvis Mazars will. We will have a board presentation on October 28th that will answer a lot of our questions and give us a lot of the information that we are looking for, but they cannot present their final report until the other audit engagement has concluded, and they know whether or not any of those conclusions or findings impact their final report. So before we move into the opening of fiscal year 2526, I do want to ask the Board at the end of the presentation, and I'll go ahead and put it out there now, and then I'll repeat it again at the end, I am going to ask the Board if they would add an action item to tonight's agenda to approve the contract amendment that Forvis Mazars has requested, changing the due date of the final report. The sooner we get that to them, the sooner they get that information to the LGC as well.
So before we move on, the Superintendent has requested to amend the agenda to add an action item to consider approval of the amended contract with Forvis Mazars with accompanying memo. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? Move to approve. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. To amend the agenda, that passes unanimously. Okay. Please proceed.
I'm sure there'll be questions when I get to the end of this. Okay, next item, so. Okay. I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and go on. So moving to 2526, current school year, a couple of updates from the RIF and where we are. All hiring at central services remains frozen. All school-based hiring remains frozen. We are reviewing non-personnel budgets again for potential further reductions pending final calculations from the impact of the RIF. The total number of staff that were administered the RIF protocol is 222, which is down from the 268, I think, that we had predicted earlier. That is due to resignations and movement that happened that way that reduced the number of people that we needed to engage with. And primarily, that has to do to, another difference in the reduced number of employees is that there was a decreased number of EC positions identified once we used a revised formula and applying the current student counts. And I think that was, you know, someone mentioned it earlier in public comment, that was part of the pause in terms of having to wait over the weekend to make those notifications. By using the 10-day count as well as the new formula, we could just do one change as opposed to potentially having to do more than one change. And then, of course, increasing the number of vacancies due to resignations that I just mentioned. Assistant principals, EC staff, and some other employees have been or will be reassigned to new schools, classrooms, or departments, and schools will be communicating those changes to families. We heard some of that today. Principals or department leaders will be using the September 15th Transition Day that the Board approved to support plans to reorganize, change service delivery, or reassign responsibilities. The reduction of months of employment for 10-month, to 10-month positions will be completed by the end of this week for identified central services and school-based staff. The FERLO plan will be communicated this week to identified central services staff. Couple of updates regarding DPI allotments and the 10-day student counts. State allotments by code, which is PRC, are generally showing increases, but this is primarily due to the salary step increases for some staff that were approved in the mini-budget bill. DPI continues to send revisions to state allotments. Some reductions have now been reinstated. For example, the child and family support teams that we talked about at the Finance Committee last time has been reinstated, and we have, I think, received that allotment. And to give you some background on what, how that's happening, on August 19th, State Superintendent Mo Green sent a letter to the Appropriations Chairs in the Norclana House and North Carolina Senate to notify them that, and this is a quote, "Unless there were any concerns or objections, or the General Assembly enacts a comprehensive state budget for fiscal year 2526, or other legislation that directs NCDPI how to proceed, NCDPI will plan to move forward on September 2nd, 2025, with the execution of contracts and the distribution of funds that have been paused." So they had paused the distribution of funds because we had an absence of a budget. And when you pause the distribution of funds, they go with the lowest of either the State House or the Senate in terms of what's in the budget for their planning allotments. So that's what they were doing prior to the mini-budget bill passing. So the mini-budget bill passed, but it did not address a lot of the items that were differences in the House and Senate budget. So what Superintendent Green did in sending this memo to the legislature was to alert them that he would go back to continuation funding from what was in the budget the prior year to implement how resources would be distributed for this year. And so that is where they have released now funding for things that were on pause before. There's still not a state budget, and the legislature did receive this prior to their last convening at the end of August, when they came back into session. They're coming back a couple of days every month, I think. And so they did receive this notification from State Superintendent Green prior to with them coming back into session in August and did not communicate back to the State Board of Education. So they proceeded with the plan that they had notified the General Assembly they would go with. So our DPI planning allotment that was provided was based on us having 50,598 students. We planned for a lower projected enrollment based on an evaluation of changes to virtual academies. So we planned on 50,549 students. Our unofficial 10-day enrollment is 49,224, which is a difference of negative 1,325 students. So schools have begun the reconciliation process to either reduce staff or gain additional staff based on the 10-day enrollment numbers. This is reconciliation. What we report to DPI will be our average daily membership for Month 1 and Month 2. And it's important to note that our 10-day enrollment and our ADM are not the same things. Enrollment is students who have shown up. ADM takes all the students who have shown up and factors in absences, and you get an average daily membership. So it's just important to know they're not exactly the same. In the reconciliation process, so based on that 10-day enrollment, we have reductions in the following areas. 71.4 teacher positions, 11 teacher assistant positions, 14.5 additional secretary positions. And then a couple of additional reductions, instructional facilitator, 2.5 positions, social workers, 2.5 positions, and then a TA for a large elementary. So that, those are all the formulas on which we allot based on 10-day enrollment. So work is in progress now for placement of staff into new assignments based on applicable school vacancies or newly earned positions in schools that gained staff. We have an obligation to the staff that have hired, we have hired and already began this school year through the reconciliation process. That is another reason that having, freezing hiring at elementary schools and keeping those vacancies, what will happen is if that vacancy remains a vacancy at the school, we'll be doing matches for the staff that are being surplus from schools based on the reconciliation into the vacancies that are available, that exist in schools that have those positions. So that work is happening right now. Happy to answer questions.
Board Member Karen.
This may not be a popular question. However, is it possible for us to get this before the night of?
Well, it would, it would, it would either change or not be complete. For example, the Friday and Monday things, all of the audit stuff happened Friday and Monday, yesterday and last Friday, Friday night. So, so some of it, yes, some of it, no. So I think what I could do is get it to you in the state that it's in Friday, when it's, when the agenda goes live, and know that it might need to be updated, if that's okay?
I would appreciate that.
Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
So, because you said a lot, so I want to go back first to the fact that whatever additional audit that is kind of done by DPI, sort of in partnership with the Local Government Commission, that we are responsible for paying for.
That's correct.
And do we have an estimation for how much that's going to cost?
I do not.
Okay. And then the other question was about, well, one of the questions is about, so is this like a legal thing where the, our current auditor is saying they can't do an audit at the same time as someone else? And essentially, even though that other audit hasn't started yet, it seems like what I hear is that they're basically saying, "We know that there is an intent to do another audit, and so because there is an intent to do another audit, we're, they're asking for us to amend our contract with them in advance of that happening."
There is a communicated decision to conduct another audit that will focus on internal control procedures. Don't know the scope of it because that engagement has not been defined, but the current engagement with Forvis Mazars does include a portion of their work around internal control. And I cannot tell you whether or not it is a law, but I think when you look at standard government accounting procedures, you cannot have two engagements that overlap.
Okay. And then the last question, and then I'll let somebody else go, is if you have, in this scenario, before, when we got our audit late in March last spring, so many people, and all of us know that we didn't meet the deadline. The deadline is in December this year for when that deadline is supposed to happen, not getting that audit completed in, like, is a problem for local government entities. It normally, that's for everybody, not just school systems, but all local government entities. If we are not in control of whether or not that audit is finished, is completed by that time, is it possible, like, do people, does the, does DPI know, or do the people who need to know, know about this impact? And, because what I'm worried about is, we make a And, because what I'm worried about is, we make a decision to amend this contract as a result of a request from this, from our auditor, and then our audit doesn't get done before the deadline, and then we're held accountable for not getting the audit done before the deadline, even though it wasn't up to us whether or not we got it done during the deadline?
I think there is understanding. I don't think that there are other solutions or options.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
This required additional, since we are responsible for paying for it, can we put additional inquiries in there we would like them to address, such as going back 15 years instead of the nine years? But going back 15 years and looking at where the system was as far as financially, what problems, what findings we had? Since we've got to pay for it, I feel like we should be able to put some stipulations in there, what we would like to see.
I think if the State Board wanted to have some time to gather some feedback from its board members and send something to the State Board of Education, I believe they're planning to entertain an engagement letter and affirm at their October board meeting. I think that's what I heard. So we have a week or two, quite frankly, to get them whatever we might want to get them. I do think them seeing the memo from Forvis Mazars will be helpful, as well as the LGC seeing it. But I think if there's, there are things you want to ask, yes, and I'm not going to talk about the cost, because I mean, I know what we, I think I know our current contract with our audit firm is around 145, is that right?
I'd definitely want to see us go back 15 years, please. And I don't know if other board members have that desire, but I do.
Y'all should talk about that. See whatever, whatever it is that you want to ask questions about or want to see what the scope of that contract is or influence it anyway.
I would concur that we need to go back further and dig in as deep as we can dig.
Any other questions? I would be, do I have a consensus to ask that we go back and dig more, or do we just sort of wait and submit some questions?
So I don't know if that's the extent of what the Board is interested in doing, and that's it, or if there are other things.
So we can submit all of those questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think perhaps if I, if I would, I would ask you maybe to, you don't want to do this via email, because that would be a meeting, so you need to, I don't know, maybe we got to figure out a way in the next couple of days or so to sort of figure out what other questions are hanging out there. I don't think you want to wait till your next meeting, so.
So do board members want to submit any other questions?
So, yeah, I would just want some clarity around. So I know that within the language of the statute, there's this difference between an audit and a review. I'd like to be really clear about what a review is versus what an audit is. I also would want to know what flexibility is there? So if the concern from the State Auditor was about our internal management controls and his recommendation to the LGC and to DPI is to focus on a review or an audit of the internal management controls, I would think that perhaps it might be appropriate if we want to go back longer to maybe say, to suggest or to request that we go longer to look at those. But I don't necessarily know if it would be appropriate to expand the purview of that audit kind of like horizontally.
Beyond the internal control that's been requested.
Right, beyond the, beyond the internal controls. Because I also think that what that does is, that complicates the normal audit a little bit more. So I think there are outstanding questions, and before we send a list of questions to the State Board, I would, I think we need to get some of the context around the process so that we don't look like we're just asking a whole bunch of questions on a list and we don't necessarily understand the full scope of what's happening.
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I haven't, you know, we are not really in control of this next step, right? So I don't know that there are rules about how we engage in this when it's, none of it is our call, right? But I don't think there's any harm in engaging to ask questions or to determine direction, scope, and those kinds of things as an understanding. I don't, it's not our call, but I think it's okay for us to engage. And so I think really the question is, if we, if we as a board, if it's as a board you want to engage, what's the mechanism for gathering that feedback and a timeline? And how do we determine, do we just send a whole list of questions to them? Or are we, you're going to agree as a board on what it is that you want to do? That one's on y'all.
Some guidance from the Board?
Is it possible that we could, this is not ideal, but is it possible that we could go back to the format that we've had previously, where we had like three board members per hour meet with their Superintendent and designate that we're not violating any rules, that's like three or four of us meet at a time and then gather information? Then once we gather that information, we then share it with the whole Board? Is that a possibility?
Sure.
So what I can commit to then is, over the next couple of days, is to contact each of you to make sure that I have an opportunity to get any questions or thoughts that you may have, and then I'll compile it and share it with the full Board.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Thank you. For Ms. Moore, do you anticipate a future contract amendment with the auditor to change the deadline from unknown to an actual date?
I think in order to do that, we'd have to have a, an expected known adhere-to timeline from the other audit. Because they, they're, what they're saying is, we can't finalize our report until we review what those findings, what's in that report. So, and you know, when I think, I think about, the only example I have really right now is the work of the Office of the State Auditor in the review that they've already conducted, where I believe they started working with our staff in May after the letter they sent in April. So it was May, we met with them in June, July, it was mid-August when their report was released, so it was about four months. And so if this next audit, I would think, would be at least the same sort of scope of work, I, you know, I don't know that I have the background to answer this question. But if that was four months and this would be four months, and they don't even have the engagement letter until October and choose a firm, then you're talking about February or later, and the holidays in the middle of that, before we might be seeing a final report from the other audit. And the level of speculation that I just engaged in out loud is kind of stunning to me. So.
Yes, Board Member Barr.
And you know, I may be saying the same thing that Mr. Bohannon just said. I just want to make sure, I don't, I don't know if I want to go back 15 years. If we need to, we can. But right now, I'm concerned about, you know, what happened during this cycle, because there are a lot of questions that I still have as far as the internal controls, who knew what, why, you know, who knew what, who didn't know, why didn't someone report it? And then if that information leads us back another four years, then let's do that. I think if we keep going back, things can get really muddy. I know I want to know, and I'm sure the community at large wants to know, what in the world happened?
Any other questions? Thank you. We're going to move on to our consent agenda items. We have a slate of two items to consider tonight. First, consider approval of budget amendment transfer to brief to the August 26, 2025 Finance Committee meeting, and consider approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the slate of consent agenda items?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
No, we don't need a second.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We have one action item, consider approval of the amendment contract with the auditor Forvis Mazars with accompanying memo. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Barr. Any more discussion?
Yep, quick question.
Yes.
Superintendent Moore, do you anticipate, and this is something I don't think you would be able to speak to, but if we don't, if we don't approve this, do you, do you think that the auditor will just terminate our contract because they don't want to be held to the deadline?
I have not had that discussion with the auditor, but I cannot imagine they would, they would, they would be able to continue.
Because the current contract as it stands, they can't guarantee that date
Correct.
Based off of the potential other audit.
Correct.
Thank you.
So essentially, we don't have a choice?
And how, like, we are just being forced upon it, and it's being done to us, and we just have to vote it through?
I could, I could 100% understand and validate that feeling, and all I can do is really explain what the request is and why it's being made.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor. Thank you. That passes unanimously. That ends our action items. September 23rd, 2025 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin our public comment, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable 2. Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable 2.